If everyone could take their seats. Counselor, under suspension of rules, Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to have welcome who's in the audience, Dr. Todd Buckley, to speak to us about the fourth annual, fifth annual, Todd? Fourth. Please come up, Dr. Buckley, and just give us a two-minute about what the Colton-Buckley Road Race is all about, and remember, you're on TV, so show your good side.
Don't be too quick, take your time.
Thanks again for giving me the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight about the Colton-Buckley 5K Road Race. Many of you are aware, we hold in this race now, this is, like I said, the fourth year. This year it'll be held at the AOH in Peabody on November the 12th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you for, in the past, having participated, and tonight, I'm just here to welcome you and invite you back again this year. Our road race began again in 2014 in an effort to raise awareness about addiction and substance abuse, having lost a child in 2014. All the money we raised is donated to many nonprofit organizations who are also doing what they can to fight the endemic problem of addiction in our community. The generosity from our community has been enormous, and we are humbled by the support everyone has given us. Local establishments like Gravak, Treadwells, Champions, the skating rink over in Peabody, Bruce McCrory's family, and many more people have been at the forefronts in our effort, and can't thank them enough. The Peabody Police Department, as well as the Healthy Peabody Collaborative have donated a great amount of time and many man-hours, making our race safe for the public. Joel and Ann, I also want to thank you for giving us a platform and the strength to come before you three years ago and speak publicly about our race and why we're hosting it. That was the first time we had spoken publicly about our personal tragedy and the experience we had about losing a child to addiction. Never did we think we'd be in this position at all, but, you know, and how horrible of an illness it is. We're learning over the years, ourselves, as everyone else is, about, you know, what it takes, and compassion and understanding, I think, is what we have to focus on in getting our loved ones into treatment, and rather than shaming them and making them feel guilty for their illness. But I just want to thank everyone for giving us the dialogue and you people helping us bring, like I said, bringing all this to the forefront. This year, we're excited to announce that we teamed up with the Citizens Inn in Peabody, which is one of two transitional homes in the state of Massachusetts that also helps address the endemic problem of addiction. The Inn is only, like I said, one of only two sober living homes in the Massachusetts. It can host, I think, up to eight families at a time for up to six months, and the focus, the critical focus of the Inn is to help the enrichment of the children. And without a safe environment, obviously, it's nearly impossible for kids to live a healthy, productive life. The funds generated through the road race has allowed us to, our foundation, to pledge $25,000 to help the Citizens Inn build a children's enrichment center. Thank you. And this program will provide the proper technology, including computers, tablets, as well as a children's library. In this safe place, children will be able to check out books, enjoy weekly storytime, reading time, in a safe, structured environment. We also, like I said, just letting you guys know exactly what we're doing, we've been raising this money now for a couple of years, like I said, this is our fourth year, and now we're starting, we have enough funds, we're starting putting money to, back into the community. We're also supporting Learn to Cope, which is a nonprofit support group, network that offers education, resources, and peer support, and hope for parents and families coping with loved ones with substance abuse issues. We support Foster Forward, which is an organization that offers many programs also to improve the child welfare system. Also, we support the Recovery School in Beverly, which is a school where students can learn or can earn a high school diploma and get the support in recovery from substance abuse. Again, thanks for your continued support, and we hope that you can join us on November the 12th at 10:00 a.m. down at the AOH. You can sign up online at www.northshourtiming.com or coltonbuckley5k.com. There's also applications and brochures, I think, floating around in the city at some other local establishments, so you could pick it up there. But again, or you can sign up the morning of the race between 8:00 and 10:00. And that's it. Again, just guys, I wanted to invite you all back again this year, and wanted to thank you all for your continued support. We were at the school committee meeting the other night, and they also agreed that they're going to join us this year, too. So that's good, and we're really proud to be part of the city and to get the support we've received from all our elected officials. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Manning.
Thank you. Tim, did we send in our admission fee yet for the, oh, excellent, thank you. Yeah, great. And I just want to say, you know, you and your wife have just been so courageous in all of this, and you came out, say, three or four years ago, and you really put a face on the tragedy and the struggle that many families are facing, and you made it, I don't want to say easier, but, you know, you led and others followed you into, you know, the light to say, there's a problem, and we all need to work on it together. And that took a lot of courage, and I'm so ecstatic that you are able to make donations of the size of $25,000 and more into the local community in this effort, and I just, I'm just so proud of you, and I'm proud of the City of Peabody for getting behind you, and we will see you on November 12th.
Thank you very much.
Once again, I just want to, you know, the two words that Counsel Manning used is exactly what I was going to use, you've put a light on the situation, and you've had courageous, you've put your money where your mouth is, so I thank you for that. And I know the press is here tonight, and I believe they've, I might have seen an article already, but for the press, if anyone wants to speak to Todd afterwards, it'd be great. And like I said, the community supports you, the North Shore supports you, and we're looking forward to Great Road Race on Saturday, November 12th. Starts at the AOH, correct?
Sunday, Sunday the 12th.
Sunday, November 12th, at the AOH, 10:00 a.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for your support again, I really appreciate it, and our family appreciates it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to invite, excuse me, Dr. Lapini, the Superintendent of Essex North Shore Technical High School, to come up and share with the council what's happening.
Good evening. Thanks for the invitation.
Thank you for accepting it.
You're welcome. So, let me do a couple of things first. It's been two years since I've been here, I think I came here in my second month on this job, so I appreciate the invitation back. I want to thank Mayor Bettencourt, in particular, in this council, for all of your support of the school. Thank Mayor Bettencourt for his personal support, he's been a terrific champion for us, and supporter of me in this two-year journey that I've had at the school. I also want to thank Jim Leakkos, who you know just recently left the committee. Jim is a terrific, terrific school committee member who I really enjoyed working with, and we're lucky now to have Beverly Griffin Dunn, who's joined us as our new Peabody representative, and it's a pleasure to be able to work with you. So, let me highlight a few things about where we are. We are now near our maximum enrollment, at least in terms of the way the school was originally structured, of nearly 1,400 students, which includes nearly 300 students from non-member districts. You will recall that this school combined the former North Shore and Peabody programs along with what was the Essex Aggie component, and so right now, I can tell you, we have students from 55 different cities and towns that attend the school, because students from those non-member communities can still come to the school and access the agricultural programs. Peabody's enrollment is currently 284 students in grades nine through 12. That includes 65 seniors, 75 juniors, 80 sophomores, and 64 freshmen. This past year, we had nearly 1,200 applications for the current ninth grade class of 360, we actually went over 360, but, of 360. So, from Peabody, 88 students were accepted for the current ninth grade out of, let's see if I can read my own writing, out of 182 total applications, there were 157 of those students who came, who applied from Higgins Middle School, other students applied from private schools or from other placements, and 72 of those students were accepted. Now, that number differs from the number who actually came, because some of them declined, right? And so we reached back in and offered acceptance to other students. So what are your students doing there? Program data for 10th through 12th grade students says that the largest number of Peabody students are in our health assisting program, there are 19, in the electrical program, where there are 19, in the plumbing program, where there are 18, in information technology, where there are 18, and in HVAC and refrigeration, one of the new programs that started when the school opened, where there are 16. So your recent graduates, we do graduate surveys, reported that they are interested in working in their career field, that was 44% of them, or attending, and/or attending a two- to four-year college, that was another 35% of them. So we're particularly focused this year, in particular, on the quality of our programs and the overall experience that students are having. So we are one of three schools in the state that has won all three rounds of the Workforce Investment Fund Grant Program. There are only, I think there are only two or three of us that have actually been funded all three rounds. We've taken in, in the governor's program, $1.3 million in funding for program improvements, you can read that as equipment, since I was last here, for our HVAC program, our advanced manufacturing program, and our dental assistant program. And I believe that's the most money any school district has taken in over that period of time as well, and we're really proud of that, because it's added new equipment for students. We've also have a renewed focus on cooperative education, which is something that this school didn't do, as well as I would have liked. Cooperative education is that component of vocational programming where halfway through the junior year into the senior year, students, when they're in the vocational program shop, can go out and work. So for comparison's sake, last year, we had about 25 students who were out on co-op over the course of the year, seniors and juniors, and right now, today, we sit at 75 students who are working. I have complete program areas right now where every senior is on the job. Every senior. Advanced manufacturing, health assisting, nearly every senior or every senior is out on a job, and we're really proud of that. Our students have helped us institute more of a focus on culture. They wanted to make sure we built a real school culture there, and that's a tough thing to do when you have kids coming from 55 different places, and so there's been a real focus on dances, on homecoming, on fundraising around certain specific causes, and on student life. And finally, I should tell you that we're really proud that we remain a Level One school district with respect to the state accountability system, which we're really proud of. To address the overwhelming demand that students have for our programs, and to address, we've worked real closely with the Workforce Investment Board around other programs that we may identify, you may have seen in the paper a few weeks ago, that right now, we're looking at four more program areas. We're looking at medical assisting, we're looking at agricultural mechanics, we're looking at engineering, medical assisting, agricultural mechanics, and marketing and business. That doesn't mean we'll start all four of those, because we're still working on two criteria for those programs. First, do students want it? So we're surveying students who we have, we're surveying students who are already applying to us, and by the way, that's something I should mention, we haven't had open house yet, doesn't occur till November. We opened our online application two weeks ago, and today, I have 300 applicants for next year, already. So we think we may exceed the 1,200 that we had even last year. So we're asking them if there's interest in these program areas, and we know already that a number of these program areas, there are jobs, and that's the work we do with the Workforce Investment Board. So we won't know till later in the year which of these, if any, we may start for the coming year, or which we may look at down the road. So we've also been looked, asked to look at different creative models for creating programs for kids. So we're talking about summer programs. We have a very successful model that we run with the Workforce Investment Board in the advanced manufacturing area, where they work with us and the community college around educating students in advanced manufacturing and machine shop, if you will, underemployed and unemployed people, young people. And we've done that three times, and nearly every one of them leaves with a job. So we're looking at that kind of model, can we run that kind of model in the health and medical fields for kids who don't necessarily get into the school? So we have great interest, for example, from Beverly, they've identified an interest in doing that with juniors. Could we run such a program in the junior, between, in the summer, between the junior year and the senior year for their students? And we, of course, would offer that to others as well. We're also looking at after-school models of programs, and we're also looking at some combination of what's traditionally been separate focus on adult education and on day school. So, two years ago, I wasn't able to stand in front of you and say much about adult education, we had a failing adult education program when I came to the school. We had very few programs, and the program overall was losing money. I'm used to working with vocational directors where they were using adult education funds to offset part of the cost for the day program. We weren't able to do that, because we were losing money. That's not the case anymore. So as I stand here tonight, we've gone from two programs that ran last year to 14 programs that are running, and our criteria is they have to have enough enrollment to at least sustain themselves. We have approximately 20 of your residents who are enrolled in our adult education programs. Crystal Bee Supply from Peabody is teaching our beekeeping course, which is fully subscribed. We have a collaboration with Cataldo Ambulance on EMT program for both day students and night students, adult education program, and we're working closely with the Workforce Investment Board on community needs, like that advanced machine shop manufacturing program that I mentioned earlier. We're also looking at running adult programs during the day. Now, there's some tricky issues around that with quarries and those kinds of things, but the good news is, we have some facilities across the street that we might even be able to use for adult programming during the day. And we're exploring youth middle school level programs to introduce vocational, technical, and agricultural skills. But let me say this, and I said it in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, when the article was in about some programs that you're looking to start here at the high school, and there was an article about some programs we're looking to start. I've been on this, I was on the K-12 side, many of you know, for a long, long time, long time, and I've only been here for a short time. I am not interested in the sort of the battles that are being fought in other parts of the states between vocational schools and their comprehensive partners. We've tried in everything that we've done to try to figure out ways to partner with school districts that have vocational programs and those that don't, our 17-member districts. And let's be honest, particularly, that's Peabody, that's Salem, that's Gloucester, that's where those programs exist. And we've tried to figure out ways to partner to help improve their programs. For example, Gloucester got a huge grant around their machining program, right? I sent my staff down to help them set it up. That doesn't happen in other parts of the state where vocational superintendent-directors and superintendents are at war with one another over students. But that's not good for kids, and that's not what I'm all about, and that's not what we're trying to do here. So your interim superintendent and I are great friends, we've been great friends for a long time, and we will continue to try to work together to make sure that our programs mesh and that we can, we can work together to, on behalf of all kids. So, happy to answer any questions you may have, and again, I'm really happy to be here.
Thank you, Dr. Lapini. Want to open up to the council? Counsel Walsh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, through you. Dr. Lapini, thank you very much for coming to visit. You know, quite often you're referred to, and it's nice to have you here to have some discussion. You and I had a brief discussion prior to your presentation this evening, and I'm thrilled to hear about the additional courses that students who are not accepted, they're not one of those 300 students, and really making courses available to them, so they may find out that this is or is not the career they want to, career path they want to go down. So I appreciate that very much. The adult education, I think, is critical. There are a lot of people who, for whatever reason, are changing careers, and with workforce development as it is, as anybody here, any business owner will tell you how difficult it is to find trained employees. So any of these programs, above and beyond the high school curriculum, I think is critical to the economy of the North Shore, and I appreciate that very much.
Thanks. Our programs in particular, I should say, are really focused on licensure areas, so we haven't built what, I live in Beverly, so I know that the recreation department can build some kind of programs, cake decorating, whatever it may be. Our focus is really, we've started a plumbing program for the first time this year, we have a very strong electrical program, we have an HVAC program running for the first time, so that, so that adults can come in, either sponsored by their employers, or come in looking for that second career that you talked about, and can attain some sort of licensure out of those programs. That's our goal, that's what we do.
Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Lapini, thank you very much. Doctor, can you please tell us that Peabody is the largest in the district?
Yes.
Followed by?
Salem.
Followed by Gloucester?
No, Beverly, Danvers, Gloucester are our three, four, five.
All the big communities, though?
Yes, we have some non-members that are rather large, even though the students can only come to those ag programs. Lynn sends a lot of students to us, even though they're not, they're not a member.
That was where I was going, how do they qualify to become a student at Essex Tech?
Yeah, same criteria, but on a different scale, right? So we identify, we have to, by the way, the legislation was written, we have to continue to honor what was part of the ag tradition, and so it's the same criteria, which I don't love, and we're working on, of grades, attendance, discipline record, the interview, we like a lot, we think that tells us a lot about kids, and we interview, by the way, all 1,200, all 1,200. But they're actually judged against one another, so we have to identify a certain number of slots for non-district kids, we have to be very careful with that number, because we want to make sure that your kids also have access to those ag programs, right? So we identify a certain number, it's been about 75 is the number we've come up with, it helps offset the budget, because they support, those communities support the budget in a different way, through a tuition charge, and that helps with, with what we were able to do with, with your assessment. But we want to make sure we balance it in a way that your students can still access those programs.
Thank you. If, you referenced that if an applicant is accepted but chooses not to come, say that applicant was from Peabody, does the Peabody slot get offered to another?
It's the next, it's the next score down. It's the next, whatever the next group of scores are, that's the law, we have to do it that way, and so it isn't necessarily within that same community. I will tell you one thing that we have done, and we've really tried to emphasize it to people, we know that there are extenuating circumstances, right, in situations where, I mean, I taught vocational for a number of years at the beginning of my career, and I can tell you that these criteria, and again, we're looking at these criteria, we, we're going to try to actually partner with the state to look at some creative and different ways of doing this, because those criteria that I just laid out for you don't tell us who the best students are, who would, who would best benefit from what we do, which is very different than what Peabody High School, Beverly High School, et cetera, does. And so we got to try, we have to try to get at that, at what that is. And so we, we're very open to parents, I'll bet I had 25 conversations, including a number of your residents during the summer months, where someone said, "I think there's an extenuating circumstance, and I'd like you to look at our criteria again, and my son or daughter's interest in your programs," and those kinds of things, and many times, we're able to admit those students.
Thank you. I can't tell you how many times I hear a disappointed student or parent talk about not getting into Essex Tech.
Yeah. It's disappointing to me as well, and that's why we're looking at additional programs and other ways of people being able to access our programs. Yeah, I'm, it's the, it's the piece of this job that bothers me the most, is that we're not able to meet all of that need.
Very much.
Counsel Charest.
Thank you. Excuse me, I've got a little bit of a cold, so, Doctor, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
I enjoy every time speaking to you. Eight years on the school committee was the best vote, one of the best votes I made, including the new Higgins. For years, I did teach vocational programs at night for adults, and they, really, it wasn't accredited program, but a lot of businesses took the course to add on to their menu. So I do see the demand there. Thank you very much for looking into that.
You're welcome.
Again, I know Beverly now is on your board, and as you probably realized real quick, just like the past board members, you're not going to get anything pass her. So we do appreciate you having her here tonight, so thank you again for coming.
Thanks.
Counsel O'Vale.
Yeah, Doctor, first of all, thank you for coming tonight. You're welcome. And putting sometimes a face on a faceless situation, because unlike our superintendent in our school system, where we see it every day, we only see the North Shore Regional when we can see you and
Sure.
really get information back. And unfortunately, a lot of times, the information back is, you know, how much it costs, and, you know, how much it's going to burden the taxpayers, et cetera, but, you know, back in the days when I was on the school committee, and, you know, as a member here in the city council that voted to proceed and authorize the funding, I've never lived with a day of regret, because I had the opportunity to go to other comprehensive vocational schools, which I consider yours to be one of the most, and, and see the offering and how different it was to what one community can offer its students based on population size. And the fact that you're now talking about, and you've implemented advanced manufacturing, you know, a lot of people think, well, manufacturing coming back into the U.S. is based on an old model where it was a grease shop, and it's not, it's not.
That's right.
You know, as a business owner and somebody that's out in the manufacturing environment all the time, I am just fascinated by and blown away by the amount of talent and skill that it takes to operate in that environment with fully digitized equipment and, you know, very comprehensive capabilities, which means that the operator has to be trained and skilled to be able to handle that, otherwise it doesn't.
That's right.
I'm currently doing a job in a, in a factory down in New Jersey that is a full production facility that used to run with 120, in a startup mode, would be 120 laborers, and now has 60 to 70 fully advanced technicians, all robotized for pulling and picking and packing and sending products all around the world. Kept that company in business as a direct result, but there's nobody there that can understand that, you know, the complexity and quality of what has to be done to run it.
That's right.
So it's awesome that we have a facility nearby that is focused in that area, because it's just such an incredible opportunity for the country to have more of this type of facility coming back to it. So thank you for the effort.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
And on the North Shore, I'll add, advanced manufacturing area and healthcare jobs, you know, they'll take our graduates times 10, there are jobs, there are good-paying jobs for them, which is why I'm able to say to you that they're all out on co-op, all of our students in health assisting are all out on co-op, and have employers who want them to stay after graduation, and who want to give them additional education, whether it's through two-year college, whether it's through training programs, or whatever, what a great opportunity for kids.
Counsel, Counsel Shawes.
Dr. Lapini, I just wanted to add on to what David was saying here. It wasn't that long ago, they were saying, "Go to college, go to college," they were forcing all the kids to go to college, they, everyone went out, got educated, and there were no jobs for them. Things have changed. It was Bill Clinton that said, "College isn't for everybody." And I remember hearing that, and I said, "Boy, I, I thought that when I was a kid myself," but it's kind of caught on. Now they're saying, "Go get a trade," and my prediction is, you're not only going to grow, you're going to shoot through the sky. I mean, that's where everyone's going now. Even if I had, my kid's small right now, I would tell him, "Go get a trade," you know, and that's the word out there right now, that's what I hear. And I run into students at your school, and I'm very impressed at what I'm hearing from them. It's more like a college atmosphere. It's more like a college atmosphere. They're there because they want to be. They're not there because, as it was 20 and 30 years ago, they went to vocational school just to get out of school.
Right.
You know, it's a lot different now. They're going, they're learning, and they're making our country better. That's what it's all about, and they're making a good living.
Yeah, and that doesn't mean
I congratulate you.
That doesn't mean, right, that they're not going to access post-secondary education. They are. Most, most of those trade areas, they're going to continue their education in some way. It's just not in, it's, it's not going to be in what we've always thought of as college.
Right. Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council Manning-Martin.
Thank you. I also supported the, the vocational, the regional voc as well, and, and I have no regrets either. I think it's a great program, and I only hear positive things about it. And I actually got a text from someone watching at home.
Uh-oh.
And I did have this, yeah, I did have the same question, and then I just, it just got reinforced to ask it. You mentioned that you offer, I don't know, are they electives to students from outside of the district? And is it only on the summers? Because it sounded as though we're not accept, we have a limit on the number of students that we will accept from participating cities and towns, yet we're accepting other students from non-participating cities and towns. Could you address that?
Sure. So my understanding and my read of the, of the, the sort of the legislation that created the place is that that was part of the deal. Part of the deal was that the Aggie school took students from anywhere. The four or five ag schools that existed in the state would take students from any school district, and there was a tuition basis, et cetera. When this school was created and combined two very different entities, the only school in the state like that, we were required to continue that component. So the tricky part of that was to figure out how many students would we take from outside because we wanted to make sure that students from member communities had access, for example, to a very popular program in Vet Tech, for example. So we've sort of figured out, since I've arrived, that that number is right around 75 students per year. They may only access those eight agricultural programs. And if we started ag mechanics, that would be a ninth that they'd be able to access. And so that's, that's how, that's how they're there. They're, they're there by the original legislation.
And their communities are charged at the same rate as ours?
No, they're charged a state-determined tuition rate and a state-determined transportation rate. And I don't remember exactly what that is right now. It's in my budget message, which was posted on the, on the website. It's always included in that budget message, whatever that number is, around 17,000 per student-ish.
And ours is what?
I don't have that in front of me right now. I know we lowered assessments this year because we, we benefited from the ending settlement on the building itself. I can, I can look that up, but I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, thank you very much. So it's, it's legislation-based?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So let me say one other thing about the budget, since I've been asked, I didn't come prepared to talk about budget because it's not that, quite that time yet. But we have, since the last time I was here, and I know the mayor's spoken about this a number of times, we've taken some very, very difficult steps where we reduced administration, I think, by seven or eight FTE over that two-year period of time. Because remember, when the school was created, the original legislation said, "Everybody keeps their job for one year." Well, we were past that year, and so it was time to take a good, hard look at every position. Where we put money into the school, it's been in teaching, and it's been largely in those vocational areas. Because as I tell our academic teachers, that's why we're there, because of those vocational programs. And so as we look to create more programs, those kinds of things, we will have a conversation with the school committee about whether that means increased numbers of kids. I hope it does because we have lots of kids who want to come in and access those programs. But we, we believe we're very transparent with budget. I prepare a budget message that describes in narrative what we're trying to achieve, and we publish every line item of our budget, and we put everything, including my contract, up on the website for anyone and everyone to see. So that's something we've tried to bring because I've heard, it was over here somewhere, the argument that, you know, we're over there, and who's paying attention to what we're doing? Well, I hope lots of people are because we're doing great things. And I hope people want to read our budget and want to see those contracts and want to take advantage of that transparency that we're trying to achieve.
I had two, two quick questions, and it kind of segued perfectly into budget. You had mentioned a little bit about fundraising. And my question on fundraising was, is it something that an organization will do, and they'll, will that go back to the school, or they maybe donate to a nonprofit? And my second question was, is that when the first, and this happened before your time, but you inherited it, when the school first opened up, there was a lot of press about very unfavorable lease agreements regarding, I believe it was the ice arena, the sports complex. Can you comment? Has that been renegotiated, or is that something that, you know, it got a lot of press, and it's kind of, kind of flying under the radar? And I'm just curious where you've, where we, where that stands. Thank you.
Sure. So when I talk about what the students have brought to us in terms of fundraising, they're talking about organizing fundraising around specific causes. So we have a thing called Hawk Holiday Hope that'll start very soon, where students do a lot of fundraising, a lot of community awareness around homelessness, and a lot, a lot of Christmas gifts, those kinds of things. They've done efforts around Houston. They've done efforts around Puerto Rico. This, this is the kind of thing that wasn't going on because really, that culture hadn't been built. And it was our students, particular student reps of the school committee, that were very interested in doing that. On your second question, so the school committee did negotiate within, again, the parameters of, of their authority. Remember that, that the Essex Sports Center is, is there through an agreement with D-CAM. What we could do, what we could bring to that was, would they, would they bring something to the table for the school, for students, for budget in terms of offsetting some costs? So it's right around 100 to 110,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, and it grows each year by a particular percentage over the length of the agreement, plus 40 hours of, of free ice time. Last year, we used that ice time to offset some of the cost for our teams. This year, we're using that ice time to create some community skating that we're going to begin to, to get out to our member communities so that they can take advantage of the ice.
Any other councils? Thank you very much for coming, Dr. Lepini.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. Motion to adjourn the subcommittee meeting of a whole. Dr. Lepini?
So moved.
So moved. And I'm going to take Council McGinn.
Thank you. I know you just adjourned, but just to, through you, to Council Manning-Martin, to address your question about the cost per student. Dr. Lepini?
We have not adjourned. I have, this is going to be for the record, so let's go.
Yeah.
No problem.
Yeah, the, the assessment was $3.9 million in the last budget. And so at 284 students, that's roughly $13,700. So
Thanks.
Does that, does that sound about right?
The, the, the assessment, again, it's set as a tuition rate for them, and it's, it's in the, I, 16,4, I have a thing for numbers, 16,484 sticks in my mind. I don't know if that's right on, but it's in that neighborhood.
Appreciably higher than what the cost is for the member.
And again, that would vary by community, depending on the number of students,
Yep.
depending on other factors that go into their school funding formula, those kinds of things, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Charest.